Call to order, pledge allegiance. Good evening, welcome to the Township of Hillsborough Planning Board Meeting, July 14th, 2016. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Ms. Fars?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sirocchi?
Here.
And Chairman Lepati?
Here.
I do not think there was any minutes to be deposed, I would say, in the packet. So we do have a couple of resolutions in your packet to bring. We have the first one, which is Country Classics, Phase 4A, File 07 PB20MJF. It's a 2016 extension request. I will accept your thoughts and recommend a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Fars?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sirocchi?
Yes.
I think that's it.
Yes. Second would be Cisco, otherwise known as Permador Industries, Inc., File 16 PB03SRV. Again, in your packet, have motions for approval.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Fars?
Yes.
And Chairman Lepati?
Yes. Thank you, Lucille.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have no, any planning board business, special committee reports, I do not believe are any.
Yep.
So at this point, we'll open up business from the floor, which is not on today's agenda. If there's anything in the public that would like to bring up to the planning board this time that is not on today's agenda, seeing none, close that. And so our first, we have no consideration of ordinances, so we move on to our first public hearing, would be John Zapkatoits, File 07 PB26NJ, 2006 Extension Request for Block 199, Lot 18, Extension of Room Drive. Advocate seeking one-year extension of preliminary and final major subdivision approved 5/8 of 8. Resolution dated 9/4 of '08, to subdivide 6.724 acres into four residential lots, the remainder of the lot to contain approximately 2.80 acres and will contain existing dwelling. Proposed Lot 1802 will contain approximately 1.12 acres. Proposed Lot 1803 will contain approximately 1.38 acres, and proposed Lot 1804 will contain approximately 1.29 acres, with improvements and conditions on the property in the R Residential Zoning District. Counselor?
Yes, Richard Schatzman, Attorney, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. This is a one-year extension application, as said by the chairman. It's in the R-zone. There was one lot, three new lots, one lot has a house. An approval on September 4th, 2008, the economy tanked, and subsequently, we now have all the approvals from all outside agencies. Would like to mention that when we got approval from the ZNR Canal Commission, they made us revise all the plans with their new stormwater regs. So now the plans now have all the new stormwater regs incorporated. The next thing we have to do are, and there have been sign-offs by Mr. White's office of the plans, we have to post fees, performance bond, posting fees with Somerset County, and that's about it. When everything else is done, we have to file the, record the easements and the other instruments which have been approved by Mr. Bernstein's office as well, and we're done. So we need a year's extension to finalize the posting of the fees, the recordation, and get that squared away. But that's what happened on this application.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions from the board?
Where was this located?
On Room Drive, off of Hamilton.
That's right between Hamilton Road and Royce Field Road Development, behind the...
Yeah, just next to the Royce Field. So it's the R-zone, and I think Mr. Masky can affirm that the R-zone hasn't changed in any way. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Anything else? Okay. We have a motion, open questions to public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any questions from the public on this testimony? Seeing none, motion to close public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. So we have a request for a one-year extension on File 7 PB26MJ. Do we have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, before we do, can we just point of order note that Ms. Beccarino has arrived?
Yes. Ms. Beccarino has arrived at 7:48. 7:48, 7:48, 38, I'm sorry. Not so late, sorry. Okay. And back to it, do we have a motion for approval of this extension?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Ally. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Fars?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sirocchi?
Yes.
Chairman Lepati?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Mr. Zempel. All right, our next application is Meadow Brook at Hillsborough, File 16 PB02MJSR, Block 163.05. Lots 101, 102, 103, 104, 105. Proposed lots 101.01 and 101.02 after subdivision. Proposed lot of 101.02 subject to application. Currently, 495 Amwell Road Lot 101, Q Farm, Amwell Road Lot 102, 503 Amwell Road Lot 103, 505 Amwell Roads Lot 104, and 507 Amwell Road Lot 105. Subdivision deeds filed 4/18 of 16 for lots 101.01 and 101.02. Advocate is seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval, preliminary and final major site plan approval, relief from maximum tract area for single-family dwellings identified, and hardship waiver for the tree preservation ordinance to subdivide proposed lots 101.02, 17.166 acres into 46 lots, 44 lots for single-family detached homes, one multifamily lot, 2.49 acres, to construct 30 multifamily townhomes situated within three buildings, one open space lot of 6.06 acres, to contain the stormwater basin and all necessary parking, roadways, utilities, and improvements on the property in the ARW Amwell Road West Zoning District. The project is governed by the provision of the new Amwell redevelopment plan, revised plans submitted 4/15 of 16, EC reviews dated 4/2516, 5/23 of 16, and 6/27 of 16. Revised plans have been submitted as of June or 6/22 of 16, continued from May 12th of 2016 without further notice. Chief Counselor?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Francis P. Lindis, and I'm members of the public, and I'm pleased to represent Kay Hobnanian again this evening. As your board members may recall, we first appeared for you and opened this public hearing on May 12th, 2016, about two months ago. And we gave the board and the public a general overview of the application, and we presented our plans. We think it was a very productive meeting because as a result of that meeting, we received staff reports from your engineer and all the staff, the township planner, and we then did indeed prepare revised plans, which are before the board this evening, which we believe will address most, if not all, of the concerns that, and issues that have been raised in the previous professional reports. We're also pleased to announce that on June 28th of this year, the Township Committee designated my client the redeveloper of the above property, and authorized the entry of a redevelopment agreement with Kay Hobnanian. So we are now the official redeveloper of this particular project, known as the, under the new Amwell redevelopment plan. Tonight, to continue the hearing, I'm reintroducing David Fisher. David Fisher is Vice President of Governmental Affairs for Kay Hobnanian, and he'll be here tonight to give again an overview of the plan revisions since the May hearing, and he'll indicate the endorsement in the Environmental Commission. We appeared three times before the Environmental Commission, and now we're pleased to announce that we have what we believe is a clean bill of health from the Environmental Commission. And he'll also testify as to any remaining issues in the, that the planner may have. Our second witness will be very brief, and that will be Richard Redding. Richard prepared the community impact statement, that's part of the record in these proceedings, and he'll provide the board and the public with his summary regarding the community impact statement. We will then present Blanche Brilard. Oh, Ray Papa, I forgot Ray Papa. Ray Papa is our, from Nigerian Associates, he's our site engineer, and he'll provide the engineering testimony in support of the application. We will then produce Blanche Briglard. Blanche is the landscape architect, and she'll provide an overview of the landscape package and discuss the tree issues, and then she'll be followed up with Tom Decker, Tom Decker from Van Cleef. Tom Decker is our planner. Tom will discuss three issues, he'll talk about tree mitigation, and address the ordinance and the economic hardship provisions of that ordinance. He'll also talk a little bit about the lots and the acreage, and the maximum tract size for each of the lots, and then finally, he'll speak to the sign, the one sign variance that we do have. Once we complete Tom's testimony, we'll have Georgia Marino, let me rephrase that, Georgia Marino will be very brief, she's doing, she did our environmental impact statement, and she'll provide the board and the public with the summary, and we're going to reorder her up on the agenda. We will not complete the presentation this evening. We have Gary Dean from Dolan &amp; Dean, he's our traffic consultant, he's not available tonight, but he will be available at the next available hearing. So without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reintroduce Dave Fisher.
Do we need to reswear him in from last meeting?
Yes, morning.
Testimony. I have a note that Mayor Delco arrived here at 7:40. Okay.
Before we start, I'm sorry, just a point of order, so both Mr. Peason and Mr. Julian have signed certifications that they, they watched the video of the May 12th meeting and would be participating tonight, and I believe Mayor Delco...
I have as well, yeah.
Well, as well, so all three of them will be eligible.
Thank you.
Do you still choose the whole sheet to go?
Yes, I do.
All right, Dave, again, what's your position with Kay Hobnanian?
I'm Vice President of Governmental Affairs.
Can you use the microphone?
Can you use the microphone, please?
Is this one okay?
Yes. You're good.
Hold it close.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Vice President of Governmental Affairs for Kay Hobnanian Homes, Edison, New Jersey.
Okay. Can you provide a brief recap of the scope of the proposed development, once again, and specifically highlighting the changes that have occurred due to the plan revisions?
Sure. Do we want to distribute the new exhibit first, or...
Yes, then you can talk about it.
Okay.
So we have a pamphlet being distributed, has it been marked into evidence already?
It's A7.
Marked as A7.
Is this new?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. This exhibit handout is very similar to the one that we distributed at the prior hearing. It's just that the first two pages after the cover sheet have been modified to reflect the new layout. They're coming around. There should be enough copies. As we described at the last hearing, the property that we're involved in was created as part of a minor subdivision, as part of the RPM development application, which created a 17.17 acre lot. That new lot is now Lot 101.02, and the deed was filed for that on April 18th, 2016, actually after we had submitted our application. That's why our application recognized the old, the old properties.
All right, so that subdivision, there was a question, that subdivision has been perfected, is that correct?
It has, and we've provided the board's engineer with the deed book and page and recording information for that new property. In terms of the development proposal, we are providing a combination of single-family homes and townhomes on the balance of the property. The slightly larger than 20-acre property in total is being utilized upfront by the affordable housing development, known as Westering Place, it's called now, which will produce 54 affordable rental units for the township as part of its Mount Laurel Compliance Plan. So the balance of the land as shown on, and that is Exhibit...
Is this A7?
Seven. Exhibit 8 now has been numbered for the first general aerial location map.
And for purposes of identification, what is Exhibit, Exhibit A8?
Yes. And it's, it's an aerial photograph, and the rendering of the proposed development has been superimposed on the aerial, and it's called General Location Map. That's A8. It's essentially identical to the A2 exhibit we had at the first hearing, but now the new layout is shown on that plan. And the property, as you know, is, is located just behind the RPM development along Amwell Road, just northeast of the intersection of Amwell with Pleasant View Road. It's essentially a vacant property. Several old residential structures are there, were in the process of being demolished by RPM. Partially vacant and open, some wooded. A good portion of the property is wooded, especially toward the north end of the property where a tributary to the Royce Brook runs along the northern edge of the property. And the new layout is depicted on A9. And for those of you who don't recall how the old layout was depicted on the plan, essentially what we did was move this upper roadway further down to the south, away from the stream, and we eliminated a cul-de-sac that came off of that roadway, in an effort to preserve more of the stream corridor, and I'll get into that in a minute, but that's really the primary difference. We created some additional open space and less disturbance as a result of that modification. And you can see, displayed, the same number of lots, was 44 before, it's still 44, single-family homes on lots at least 5,200 square feet in size. The site plan also accommodates 30 townhomes located in three buildings, that didn't change. That portion of the layout wasn't really modified at all with respect to the roadways or buildings. The tout lot is located just to the west of the upper townhouse building, the 12-unit building. And all of those uses and the density which is depicted on the plan are consistent with the adopted redevelopment plan, which establishes the zoning criteria for the property. So in all, we have 74 homes on a little over 17 acres, at a density of about 4.3 homes per acre. I'm not going to get into the architectural designs too much, other than to say that they were presented at the prior hearing. We have those, we had two out of the four models shown as illustrative renderings. The single-family homes would generally range in size from about 2,200 square feet to about just shy of 3,000 square feet in size. The three-story, what we call stacked townhomes, have two different model types within them, the smaller being a two-bedroom, 1,600-square-foot townhome, and the larger, a 2,200-square-foot three-bedroom townhome. All of the single-family homes will have two-car garages and two-car wide driveways. All the townhomes would have a one-car garage and a one-car wide driveway. An additional parking is provided along the street near the townhomes as required by the regulations that govern parking under the residential site improvement standards. So that's generally the architectural style, which we depicted in your pamphlets, in the handout, and on the plans, you know, is consistent, I think, between the townhomes and the single-family. That was a question that was posed by the planning department. But basically, we intend to provide for options for a mix of siding and, in different architectural styles, but basically, kind of a colonial classic architecture with some stone introduced on different elevations. Each home would have two or three different types of elevations, so this is one elevation for the Haddonfield model. This is A4 I'm referring to now, that's the smallest, or no, next to the smallest home. But with the elevation that's shown here, that's just one, there's usually two, sometimes three different front elevations for the same model to make them look different. So each single-family home would have different, you know, color schemes, but generally, the architectural context of the front elevation and the design of the house is consistent throughout the development. And you can see similar elements between this and the townhomes. Similar siding, white trim, window treatments, the garage doors, so that they, they basically look like a compatible development. They don't look much different. The common areas in the development, the total open space is about six and a half acres. That actually went up as a result of the revised plan. We ended up with close to a half an acre of additional open space, undisturbed area with the revision, and about .3 acres of less impervious coverage, so that was a positive change.
So that's the percentage of open space, then?
The percentage of open space is 38% of the property. So for a site that's, that's zoned for, you know, modest density, in terms of a combination of multifamily and single-family, you know, close to 40% of the property would be left in open space. There's an entry sign that our planner will talk a little bit more, that's located at the first intersection, as you enter the development through the affordable development, and you'll hear a little testimony on that. There's common area open landscaping, especially around the townhomes, that our landscape architect will touch on. The tout lot equipment can be described. There's a stormwater basin, wet pond to handle drainage, internal roadway, sidewalks, and the exterior of the townhomes. All those features will be managed by a homeowners' association that will be created to ensure that the community, you know, maintains its upkeep and look in terms of the grounds, the maintenance of the roadways, and, and all of those types of features.
All right, Dave, can you explain the changes made to the plans and the subdivision layout since we last appeared before the board on May 12th?
Sure. On May 18th, shortly after we met the last time, we submitted additional information that the Environmental Commission had required, so that submission was made, some additional reports and some revised plans. On, two days later, we submitted an alternate layout, which is the basis of these new plans now. And we wanted to review that with the Environmental Commission to hopefully gain their consensus on how we were able to reduce the disturbance to the stream corridor buffer and get them to essentially endorse the new layout and some very minor compensation that we would create as a result of some small disturbance of the stream corridor buffer. So the commission reviewed that at their meeting at the end of May, and they reached a consensus that they, they liked the modified plan, and that they basically endorsed the tree mitigation plan, as well as the buffer averaging that we proposed along with that alternate layout. So coming off of that meeting, that formed the basis for our plan revisions. And on June 22nd, we submitted a full set of revised subdivision and site plans consistent with that layout modification. That also impacted the location of the stormwater basin, and some of the utilities, and a lot of the grading in relationship to the areas that abut the open space on the northern end of the property. So we met with the Environmental Commission, as Frank said, a total of three times, twice since our last meeting on May 23rd and on June 27th, and as a result, the board, or the commission issued a July 4th report, which essentially endorses the layout and the averaging plan and the tree mitigation plan, and just includes some other conditions that relate to other permits from, from agencies that we need to secure permits from. So we were pleased with that. In addition, we, we received, or we submitted on June 27th also a calculation for the site improvements on the property, and that has to do with the hardship waiver under the tree preservation ordinance. And haven't received any specific comments from that yet from the town, but that will be part of the consideration of the economic hardship waiver under the tree ordinance when we get to that portion of the, the discussion. And we also met with Dave Masky to review his planning memo and go over all the items that he had raised in his May 3 review memo. The planning department has issued a new memo, however, I feel pretty confident that we've addressed what he was concerned about in terms of the plans themselves, the layout, some issues regarding circulation, and the testimony that you'll hear with respect to the sign and the entry sign, and also the maximum tract size for single-family. And lastly, I think, lastly, almost, I, at the direction of Mr. Masky, we contacted the Hillsborough School Transportation Supervisor, Marcy Decker, to talk about where the school would prefer to pick up school-aged children. And because the streets are not public streets, the school does not generally, you know, allow its buses to frequent private streets. So they decided that the, the best location for the bus stop would be essentially at the main intersection of Amwell Road and the entrance road between the two affordable housing buildings. And they're recommending that a concrete, you know, an expanded bus pad be installed at the back of their sidewalk. Representatives from RPM have been in kind of communication with Ms. Decker as well, and, you know, we just recently received that decision from the school district, so unless they change their mind, that, that looks like what we'll have in terms of a bus stop location.
Just so I'm clear, you're saying that there would actually be a cutout, or the bus would actually stop on Amwell Road?
I, I think it's their intention that the bus will stop on Amwell Road. They're recommending that, you know, just as you turn into the RPM development, right behind the sidewalk here, and they haven't defined the size, but say, you know, like say eight feet by five feet, an additional concrete sidewalk-type area be constructed so that the children can essentially wait there for the school bus, you know, off the sidewalk. And obviously, you know, to just the east side of the main entrance road into the affordable housing development. If they, if the bus pulled in here, then the bus would have to turn around somewhere.
Is there, is there a means or, or enough space to create almost like a, a little, a little arc, you know, where you could basically come off the road, but there's still...
They can, I, I think what they, and I'm not exactly sure how the bus will be positioned when they accept, you know, the students, but they may pull into the entrance itself a little bit off the road, with its lights flashing, obviously, which would require traffic to stop both ways on Amwell Road, but still pull off so that the children can safely enter the bus and not be, you know, walking off the sidewalk, you know, right at the edge of Amwell Road. I, I'm not exactly sure how they intend to, you know, position the bus.
I guess my question is, on the design, is there effectively enough space to create some type of a, a small turn lane, or...
Oh, what you're saying is actually, could they get off of the Amwell Road...
Correct.
...lane of traffic?
Correct. Almost create another lane just for the, the bus to enter, so that there's a separate stop for, and it's not stopping on Amwell.
That may impact, you know, whatever this development project proposed in terms of utilities, underground utilities, and that type of thing, I, I don't know. I can't answer that. I, I don't, I know that you said they make many stops along Amwell Road with the bus in, within the right-of-way, within the street. And obviously, with their flashers, traffic, it's not a divided highway, so traffic needs to stop in both directions. She didn't mention, you know, a recommendation that there be actually a... She didn't mention, you know, a recommendation that there be actually an offlane for the bus. I mean, frankly, it would have been nice if they could have just circulated within the development and picked up here, and I kind of encouraged her to consider that, but because they're private streets, they won't do it. At least that's what she's told us.
I think the concern might be, you know, with the various times that we have in Hillsborough of picking up high school students, elementary, middle school, you know, there's four different timeframes on which they stop. The intersection further to the east, where the high school is, is jam-packed anywhere between seven o'clock in the morning till 7:25, with people delivering on off. Amwell Road is a major east-west, as you're well aware, thoroughfare through town, 45 miles an hour. I think my concern is, is to have that with the number of houses and assuming there's 1.7 children, or whatever Mr. Lenis will tell us, children per household is, times 40, times the condominium developments. To me, it sounds like a large number of potential children with stopping there on Amwell Road. I believe that's a safety concern that I want to express and go on the record of pointing that out here to the public. I don't know if that's the best choice, is what I'll say.
Well, we're open to alternatives, again...
Yeah, I think you need to look into alternatives. I think that's a concern that I have.
I just don't know what we can do to compel the school board to use private streets to pick up schoolchildren.
You might not be able to compel the school board, but maybe you can compel yourself or the other, I don't know, I don't know if other people up here have the same...
That's why I raised the point, Papa. I agree completely. It's, you know, it's a, if there are other stops, I think it's for...
Maybe four or five, yeah.
...a child or two. It's not for 30 kids.
Yeah, I mean, you could technically be stopping traffic for up to a minute and a half or two minutes. And I'd encourage you, once school gets in, to visit the intersection of Raider Boulevard and Amwell Road when the high school is in session. Not only is Raider Boulevard backed up, Amwell Road is backed up past the entrance to the high school for the better part of 15 or 20 minutes. Obviously, you're going to have high school kids, you're going to have elementary school kids, maybe private busing, but I think that's, the safety of the children needs to be paramount on this. If you're going to have it out on Amwell Road, I think you need to...
Well, the applicant will, of course, continue discussions with the Board of Ed and attempt to persuade them. Again, this is designated an area in need of redevelopment.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not discounting that at all, Counselor. I'm just talking about a safety concern. As you know, Amwell Road is 45 miles an hour.
And we're all concerned about the safety, absolutely.
You have other driveways and other roads that are people pulling out, with deer crossing and other things. Having lived in that section for many years and traveled that section daily, it's a concern that I have. Thank you.
Yeah, just to be clear, since it's a, I know it's not technically a divided highway, but because it's four lanes, is it, traffic would have to stop in both directions?
I believe those are the regulations. I'm not a traffic engineer, but, you know, I'm getting nods from our engineer. I think unless it's a physically divided highway, both lanes of traffic have to stop.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're going to have to find a better way. That's really ridiculous to stop rush hour traffic like that, and, you know, besides the safety concerns, you know the kids are going to be spilling out, you know, along the sides, so.
Mr. Fisher, has there been any discussion or conversation with the RPM developers regarding improvements? I know that their approval was conditioned upon them reviewing possible school bus pickup alternatives with the township and the Board of Ed.
Well, when I first contacted Ms. Decker, she said RPM was already in contact with her on the same issue. So they were trying to resolve how the issue would be, you know, solved in terms of where the children would be picked up. Once I provided her with our plan, and she saw, I guess, how it coincides with theirs, and then she talked to me about the nature of our streets, and I said, "They're designed like public streets. They're just as wide as public streets with sidewalks, and it's just that because we don't connect to an existing public right-of-way," I think it was a determination early on in the review of our project that we couldn't have public streets within the development because we don't connect to any public streets. We connect to the office building, access driveway, and another private street between the affordable units. So because of that, I think that's what, you know, led her to the conclusion that our buses won't be able to access the development. I said, "It's kind of too bad, because I think it would be a better condition." But that's the answer we got. So we'll go back and talk to, you know, the school board more, and maybe they'll reconsider. If there's anything this board or the town can do to help us in that regard, we'd be happy to accept your assistance.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything on that issue?
Okay.
Okay. And then, I think, just to kind of sum up, we've been advancing other applications. Our engineer will talk about the farm marshal's review. We've got a good review memo from them and the engineer's report. He's gone through our plans in detail. The balance of our applications to other agencies are progressing. We've reached essentially a point where Somerset County Planning Board is about to approve the project. We resubmitted plans to them. We also worked out a recycling agreement with them, so they'll pick up recyclables within the development, and we'll have the homeowners' association contract with a private carter for regular refuse pickup. I think that's it.
Okay, no further questions? Any questions?
I have one, just as a clarification. With the revised plan and keeping all the number of lots, or number of homes the same, yet using less acreage seems to be with more, what did you, did you make the lots smaller to accommodate all the new configuration, to keep everything the same? Because you obviously moved some, that, all the homes that were on that second turnaround or cul-de-sac now all to the left. So did, how did you kind of put that together?
Well, we did. The lots really didn't get that much smaller, by maybe a foot or less in some instances. However, we lost a street. So we picked up some land that was devoted to a roadway that now we could devote to lots.
Okay.
So where on the old plan, we had a cul-de-sac that extended from, we have the old exhibit here.
What does that mark, that exhibit?
This is marked as A3.
Okay.
As you can see, we had kind of a straight roadway across the upper part of the property, ending in a cul-de-sac, pushing the stormwater basin kind of up into that northeast corner. The basin is still generally in that location, but we picked up additional land as a result of losing that impervious coverage, and then spread the lots across a curved roadway. So while we squeezed, you know, maybe these lots in here by six inches or so, most of the, you know, to bring down the street, we picked up some additional land that allowed us to spread the lots across that curved street and eliminate a cul-de-sac, which generally...
Just so I make sure we didn't make the lots smaller for more density, so essentially a minor change as far as lots.
Yeah, very minor.
You had to kind of figure out from that stream, the buffer averaging, so it kind of had to reconfigure that, the lots themselves.
Well, I think it's a better plan, for sure. Absolutely, I just, okay. All right, we have a motion to open to public on this witness.
It's almost a second.
Second. On favor?
Right.
Okay, so will we have any questions for the testimony? It's just this witness from the public, because obviously, we have a lot more witnesses come, so on this testimony, anyone?
Yes.
Sure, come on up. Please state your name and street, as usual. Is that mic on, Cass? Is that live? Okay.
Susan Golliford, Hunt Club Road. On the question of the school buses, I used to live in the manors, which is private roads comes out to Amwell Road across from the high school. And we had a lot of school buses that came in and out of there, like you said, for different schools, and have you, did you think to maybe, or would it be possible for you to check with the manors and see how the school buses are handled in that development? That's a 78-unit development of townhouses in a similar location with similar pickups. Plus, you're going to have the 14 units in the RPM development, so you, which are designated for disabled, so you may additionally have buses for disabled children going in and out of there more than you normally would have.
Thank you, Susan.
We haven't, and I kind of took on, at face value, what Ms. Decker told me about, you know, the fact that they don't use private streets. But that being the case, you know, we'd be happy to revisit the issue and use that as one example.
Can you provide contact information?
Yeah, as to where that takes place. We can probably look it up. We'll find out who the management company is.
It's just, it's just south of the high school, on the left side.
It's like across from the...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Motion to close public for this witness? Okay, thanks, Dave. Second. Richard Redding. Has he been sworn in, Counselor? No. Okay, that's why I need to swear him in.
Mr. Redding? I do. Richard Redding, R-E-A-D-I-N-G.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Redding, will you give the board members of the public over here the benefit of your educational and professional background qualifications and experience?
Okay, thank you. My name is Richard Redding. I'm an economic analyst and consultant, and have been so engaged for over 35 years. I'm a graduate of the Pennsylvania State University with a degree in economics, also a principal of Richard B. Redding Associates, a Princeton-based consulting firm, and provides economic, demographic, and financial research to approximately 650 clients, both in the public and the private sectors. One of the specialties of the firm involves the economics of land use. In that regard, I've appeared before planning boards, governing bodies, and the Superior Court throughout New Jersey, and from, basically from Maine to Colorado to Florida. Over the years, I prepared reports and appeared in approximately 650 matters, including other matters here in Hillsborough.
Thanks, Senator. Does he be testifying to what is his... The community impact, the economic impact of this development as it affects Hillsborough. We'll accept your qualifications, thank you. All right, Mr. Redding, we've already submitted, and it is part of the board file on this matter, a community impact statement for Meadowbrook, a proposed residential development, and it's dated December 30th, 2015. Is that impact statement authored by you and your firm?
It was.
Okay. So I want to make that part of the record. It is part of the file. All right. Now, we were asked to just summarize your conclusions, so you want to give the board and the public the benefit of a summary of your conclusions?
Okay. As you've heard from Mr. Fisher, the proposal involves the development of 44 single-family homes and 30 attached townhouse-style units. We've utilized a standard input-output model that's developed by the Center for Urban Policy Research at Rutgers. It utilizes the township's fiscal infrastructure as the base for calculating the impacts of the development in terms of the allocated cost and the added revenues. The proposed development, as you have heard, has 44 single-family detached homes. Those units would have an average sales price of about $580,000, and 30 attached townhouse style units with an average sales price of $365,000, yielding a project with a completed value of about $36.5 million. Utilizing the demographic multipliers that are published in the, by the Center for Urban Policy Research, we anticipate a total of 230 residents, including 44 public school children. The completed development, based upon that valuation, would generate annual revenues of about $830,000, and the costs that would be allocated for municipal, school, and county services would amount to about $729,000, yielding an overall revenue surplus, annual revenue surplus, a little over $100,000, $101,000. The reason for the surplus is that the new development is being added, and on a per-capita basis, it's bringing a ratable 1.27 times the township's average residential ratable, and it's bringing a schoolchildren or a per-pupil valuation 1.2 times the township's average. The average residential unit with a sales price of $493,000 is obviously above the township's average residential value of $377, and for that reason, a surplus would be anticipated. Overall, this project would be expected to generate .55 schoolchildren per unit, excuse me, .595, which is somewhat higher than the township's average of .55. So the analysis here reflects both the costs and the revenues that would be anticipated for this type of development in Hillsborough Township.
All right, I have no further questions.
Can you discuss the basis of your, the anticipated sales values? Is that what they would expect to be for list price, or is that what your assessed value of those homes would be?
Well, that is the estimated sales price, and we're assuming that the deed price would be the assessment. Hillsborough, as you know, is, has an annual revaluation, so...
I do.
Basically, it's 100 percent. So in this case, unlike being in Hudson County where it's 25 or 30 percent, your market value and your such values are the same.
How large are the lots?
Pardon me?
How large are the lots?
Five, six thousand.
And what would be the prices of the multifamily houses? They were, what price?
Yeah, the multifamilies, they, they're a mixture, I'm sorry, stack townhouse, they're a mixture of two and three-bedroom units, and the overall average on those units was, I thought I had said that, it's...
380, I think you said, or something like 385?
I think that's the number.
364, nine.
Yes, 33649 is the average sales price.
Hope we can get it.
God bless America.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So, and then the numbers that you utilize for the, for the number of schoolchildren, did you basically look at the Hillsborough average, or was that the metric that's part of the standards through the, that are given through the state?
This is a study that was prepared by Rutgers University called the Center for Urban Policy Research. It was most recently updated in 2006. It's called Who Lives in New Jersey Housing? And there are a whole set of tables in there, what we call demographic multipliers, and they're attached at the back of the community impact statement, and we've used those. I was pointing out that this product, which is a mixture of single-family homes and attached homes, somewhat smaller than the average type of homes that have been built recently in Hillsborough, but we've used the multiplier, it's actually somewhat higher than the township average.
And the Rutgers demographics, is that the most recent tool that's generally utilized for these types of studies?
It is. 2006 is the, is when it was published. I did, I've spoken to him several times, asking him if there was a potential for an update since the 2010 census, and their answer to that is, no. The last time they had prepared this was back in 1993, so having it, having it for 2006 is a significant update. So it is the one that most professionals would use. And Rutgers did the study, not just for New Jersey. These multipliers are available for New York State, Pennsylvania, we've used them in Illinois. It's a fairly broad-based study, and that's, that's the reason that it's used, is because it's not a single individual project, which can, you know, create a small-based bias. It is a broad statewide survey.
And the, so the Rutgers study is the most recent one, and the multiplier that you used was based upon the state average, or is it just sort of an output from all the demographic data that goes into the, into the model that's utilized?
We use the statewide average, or actually, there are regional averages, but the regional averages don't go into the detail that state averages do. So we've used the standard statewide demographic multipliers, one for single-family homes and separate ones for the stacked townhouse product.
And that segregates and differentiates... Okay. And that segregates and, and differentiates between properties that would be solely for a specific purpose, like, like senior housing versus, versus, you know, multifamily?
Senior housing is a separate set of demographic multipliers, as are affordable housing units. So, they are, they are separate. So, the ones, the ones that we are using are the statewide demographic multipliers for market housing units, and again, for single-family homes and for the type of townhouse product.
Anyone else? Okay, you done?
I have no further questions.
Motion to open to public?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have any questions for this witness on his testimony in public? Okay, come on up. I almost didn't see you there. Please state your name and address on the microphone up here, please. Up here to the,
Hi, my name's Barbara Kulaski. I live in Somerset Park.
What's your, could you spell your last name, please?
It's K-U-L-A-S-I-N-S-K-I.
Can you just please speak into the microphone? Thank you. So, that's why they can hear it on the camera, too, that's why.
Actually, I have a number of questions, but are you only pertaining to this one?
Only for this witness?
Yes, just for this.
Okay. Well, I, they had talked about in the, in the meeting in, I guess, October, that this was supposed to be for low-to-moderate income housing. Whatever happened to that?
No. That's the application that's in front of this.
That's the front piece of the site.
Not this property.
So...
There's two parcels.
There's two parcels. This is the property, the one that, that you're thinking of is the one that's in the front. This is the one that's highlighted in green.
Well, no one gave me any diagrams, so I don't know what I'm looking at. If, maybe if I had a diagram, I'd have a better idea of what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Do you have a diagram?
The diagrams are the ones up there.
See the one on the wall there?
Well, but you're talking about phase one and phase two. Phase one is supposedly the moderate to low-income and also for disabled people, along with a, a medical building, facility, medical office building. And then phase two is the houses, the single, individual housing. Am I wrong?
Well, they're not necessarily phases. They're, they're two separate projects, but, but they are on, they're, they're sort of adjacent to each other, yes. So, what's in the white up there is the, is the original one that, that I think you were mentioning in the, towards the front, right? That, that sits right on Amwell Road.
Here, maybe I could, maybe I could help. These two buildings that are shown, we showed them on our plan simply because our development has access through that first section, but that's not this application. These were already approved by this planning board last year.
And, and that's for the low-to-moderate?
That's correct.
And, and disabled?
Yes.
So, this is not what we're talking about?
Correct, separate application.
It's everything behind that is our application for the single-family homes and for the townhomes.
Oh, so you want to build more townhomes on top of that?
Well, these aren't really townhomes. These are rental units that are affordable. These are, these are market-rate townhomes that'll sell to not income-restricted.
Okay, all right, now I have a better idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for this witness on this testimony? Okay, seeing none, motion to close public?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Ray Papa, thanks, Rich.
And Mr. Papa's testifying for what, Counselor?
For the first time.
And what, for what does he testify?
Engineering, site engineering.
Okay. Square him in, Lucille, please.
Yes, I do. Raymond Papa, P-A-P-A. I have a civil engineering degree from the University of Delaware. I've been employed by Nigerian associates for over thirty years, doing mainly residential site plans and subdivisions. I've had an engineering license in New Jersey since nineteen eighty-eight, and I've testified in front of many planning boards.
Okay, we'll accept your qualifications. Please have a seat and use the microphone.
Mr. Papa, were you and your firm retained by the applicant to prepare the site plans and the subdivision plans that are before the board this evening?
That's correct.
All right, you want to first describe your, your role in, in the project and then proceed with your testimony?
We basically prepared the concept plan and the engineering plans and subdivision plans. And the stormwater management report, and we will be handling the environmental permitting as well.
Okay. Now, you prepared the, you also prepared the revised plans that are before the board this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, do you want to address those revised plans?
Yes, but I'm going to start out by putting the display up.
Very good.
Why don't we take the old rendering down? Not to confuse anybody. We have a, what is this marked?
Aerial photograph.
And how is it marked?
It is not marked yet.
That is marked yet.
Eight-ten?
Eight-ten.
What is the date of that rendering, Mr. Linus?
The date, seven fourteen sixteen. The aerial photo shows the site, and you can see around the edges of the site and the stream corridor is wooded. Center of the site, there are some scattered trees. As part of the development, we'll be disturbing about twelve hundred and seventy-four trees. There'll be testimony later on regarding tree mitigation and a hardship waiver. The northern boundary of the site is a tributary to Royce Brook. Now, Royce Brook puts several environmental constraints on the site. One is wetlands. We have a letter of interpretation and a fifty-foot wetland buffer. There's the DNR canal buffer, which is measured from the one-hundred-year flood line, and we took that from the FEMA maps. FEMA gives you elevations along the stream. We took those elevations and using the topo maps, drew a line following that elevation and set the hundred-year floodplain for the DNR canal. Then there's the DEP's flood hazard line, which is the one-hundred-year flood line plus one foot in elevation. So, using the topo map, we set that line, which is slightly outside of the one-hundred-year floodplain. The most restrictive easement would be the town's one-hundred-and-fifty-foot stream corridor line, which is identical in this case to the DEP's riparian buffer. We sent our surveyors out. They located the top of bank along Royce Brook, and we set the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer off of that. Now, Mr. Fisher talked about us doing some buffer averaging, you know, with the approval of the Environmental Commission. The main place that we're buffer averaging is across the corner of that lot, or those three lots. We could design the site without buffer averaging, but we'd have to put a retaining wall in the backyard and pretty much restrict the use of the backyards for those lots. So, we'd like to give them a usable lot, and we're going to be giving back three and a half times the area that we're actually taking.
And the Environmental Commission endorsed that, that approach?
Yes, they did. In the end, we're going to take the most restrictive of all the lines and create a conservation easement that'll be dedicated to the Township of Hillsborough, the DEP, and the DNR canal. And going to the site plans, we have a roadway system that meets RSIS. There'll be two accesses, one to Amwell Road, Otuta Amwell Road, and one will be through the office complex. I believe the name is Courtyard at Amwell, and they've, there's an easement that allows that access. Township engineer asked us to add a note to the plan that says that their driveway will be restored to the satisfaction of the township engineer after construction, and we agree to put that note on the plan. The roadways meet the RSIS as residential access. They'll be twenty-eight feet wide. Curb returns will be twenty-eight feet. That allows for the fire truck access, and we have an agreement with the fire marshal as far as truck access, fire hydrants, some no parking restrictions, you know, fire zone signs.
As a matter of fact, Chief Weniger, chief fire marshal, in a report dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, said that all his comments have been addressed at the present time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you met with him, or you discussed this matter with him, showed him the revised plans, and we're fine there?
Yes. The twenty-eight-foot roadways allow for parking on one side. There'll be signage. I've allowed the parking on the outside of the curves. The single-family section of the site, we have forty-four lots. You asked if the lots got smaller. Along these lines, we may have cut a half a foot off each lot, but one of the things that allowed us to condense the site was there are several restricted lots where Kayhof Nanyan can't sell their biggest house, where the original plan, practically all the lots allowed them to sell the biggest house they're offering. So, there's going to be some restrictive lots. You can see, let's say down in that lower corner, up off the cul-de-sac, you know, places like that. That's what allowed us to condense the site down. The ordinance allows thirty-foot-wide lots by ninety deep. Our smallest lot is fifty-two and a half wide by a hundred deep. So, fifty-two hundred and fifty feet is the smallest lot. The average lot's about fifty-nine hundred feet. Impervious cover is allowable is fifty-five percent. So, I did a display on the plan. I took the largest house Kayhof Nanyan offered and put it on the smallest lot, calculated the driveway and the front walk, and I didn't take into account any cutouts. I just used the full rectangle of the building box, and that's fifty-two and a half percent. So, each one of those houses would be allowed to have a hundred and fifty feet extra if they wanted to come in for a patio or something along those lines. And that's the biggest house on the smallest lot on the site. Townhome section, there's thirty townhomes on a two-and-a-half-acre lot. Now, on the subdivision plan, you'll see a line that comes down the center line of this road and the center line of this road. It may seem a little confusing, but I had to carve out a two-and-a-half-acre lot for the townhomes, and that's how I did it. So, the townhomes have partial of the roadways associated with their lot. And the townhome site is fifty-four percent impervious, where sixty-five is allowed. Also, the density, there's sixteen acre allowed, we have twelve per acre. As far as areas, the single-family lots are six acres. The right-of-ways are two-point-one-eight acres. The townhome section's two-point-five, and the open space lot, which includes the detention basin, is six-point-five acres. There'll be planning testimony later on that describes how these different areas fit into the new Amwell development plan. And one other thing, my plans call the zone the ARW zone, where Mr. Maskey informed me it is the new Amwell redevelopment plan is the actual zone. Parking, each townhouse will have one-car garage and a driveway, counting as two spaces per RSIS. The single-family will have a two-car garage, twenty-foot driveway, counting as three-point-five spaces. There's twenty-two perpendicular spaces around the townhouse area, and I estimate at least twenty perpendicular spaces along the roadways, and we easily meet the RSIS standards for parking. As far as site grading goes, the site was very challenging to grade. The site slopes towards the stream. All of the sewer has to come out to Amwell Road. So, that caused us to elevate the rear of the site and the center of the site. Across these rear yard lines is a retaining wall that varies between four and seven feet. The sewer is all sloping out towards Amwell Road. The stormwater's being taken out to a basin near Royce Brook. In order to achieve this, we're importing about fifty thousand cubic yards of fill. That is mainly to make the sewer system work without doing a pump station, but it has the added benefit of raising the site, and because of the low water tables, allows Kayhof Nanyan to sell basements. And each lot will have a test pit taken on it to determine seasonal high groundwater, and if the adequate separation isn't there, we won't sell the basement on that lot.
This is after you've done the grading?
What's that again?
This is after you've done the grading, that test, or before you've done the grading? And when you bring the, the soil in?
I would say, after they do the grading, they'll have, they will have to take the test pit down where the basement's going to be.
Right, so at the, at the actual level what the basement would be?
Yeah.
So, they're all of our, expected to have basements?
We are hoping to have all basements.
When will that testing take place? What time of the year?
I'm not a hundred percent sure how your building department works. I would say when they ask for their building permit is when they would supply the test information.
I know it's probably different, you know, after the winter and into the early spring.
We'll measure a seasonal high groundwater, not just actual groundwater, and that's done by looking at the mottling in the soils.
Okay. So, it doesn't, what you're testifying to, it doesn't matter. You could do it in August and in December, and it would be the same?
It should be, yes.
Should be, but...
Well, it's, it's based on mottling. They're not actually looking for standing water.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking if there's a difference.
And the mottling should be there the same in August as it is in December or January.
Okay.
The retaining wall also protects the conservation area as well, correct?
That's a, a side benefit to the retaining walls. There will be a retaining wall all along those rear yards with a four-foot fence. It would keep the homeowners from encroaching into a wetland buffer, like if you had big, large lots, singles, somebody might start encroaching their lawn, putting a swing set. That wall's going to keep anybody from encroaching into the conservation easement. On top of the walls will be a four-foot fence with plastic-coated mesh. The township engineer asked if I thought that was safe. We use it on almost every project we've designed, and it seems to work well. One of the other challenges of the site was saving trees. Small lot, single-family homes are extremely hard to save trees on. We're only going to have twelve and a half to thirteen feet between buildings. Also, the way we had to slope the site towards Amwell Road to make the sewer work, once you raise the grade eighteen inches, you can't save an existing tree, which is the reason we're cutting as many trees as we are. It's also difficult to get drainage from rear yards out through these narrow openings between, so we put an extensive drainage system in the backyards that will be running through easements down the rear property lines. All of the stormwater piping will go to the detention basin. We're proposing a wet basin. The DEP's Best Management Practices Manual recommends a twenty-acre drainage area to a wet detention basin. The problem with the recommendation is it doesn't relate the drainage area to the size of the basin. It doesn't say a two-acre basin, a one-acre basin, it just says twenty acres. Well, we have thirteen acres of drainage going to our basin, but the basin's only point-three-five acres. We have not just the thirteen acres, it's what's called five acres of directly connected impervious. You take the driveways, the roadways, the gutters, and a completely impervious, connected to a pipe system of five acres. So, I estimated a, a half-inch rainfall could supply seven inches of depth to that detention basin. We have designed several detention basins around the state with less than twenty acres and gotten them permitted by the DEP. One example is a basin at Four Seasons at Manalapan that's point-four-four surface, larger than our basin, and only five and a quarter acres of drainage. I use that as an example because I live around the corner from it. I observe it four or five times a, a week, and in the eight years that basin's been functioning, I have never seen... seen the surface water go down to anything that would be considered even noticeable. So we think we can get this permitted through the DEP, and there will be no trouble maintaining the water surface.
How does the water, if it's sloped for the sewers to come down toward Amwell Road, how does the water go to your retention basin if it's uphill?
We have low points in the roadways. We put the inlets there.
Okay.
Everything is connected.
But how does the, water flows the lowest point, right?
But I, I, the basin is low enough that from the lower points, everything that we have impervious on our site, I can collect and get to the basin.
So how deep is that basin?
The water surface will be five and a half feet.
Okay.
With the proper safety ledges that the DEP recommends.
Okay.
Above the water surface are emergency spillways at elevation 99 and a half. At the 100-year storm, we will be impounding four feet of water.
So is there a fence around that retention basin as well, if it's a five-foot?
We have some walls around the detention basins with fences, but we're not fencing the detention basin.
Okay.
We, different towns, different towns look at detention basins different.
Okay.
Some think, "Fence it off." Others think if you fence it off, you can't see if anything's going on in there, if there's a kid in the basin or anything like that, so.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was more curious about how the water, if it's facing again toward Amwell Road for your sewers, how it gets from going this way back up to the right-hand corner?
Because we're raising the rear of the site.
Okay.
And have the basin down at the more natural contours.
Okay.
I'm able to get the water from the low end of the site over to the basin.
So you're saying the sanitary sewer goes to Amwell?
Right.
The water, the stormwater goes to the basin?
Natural slope of the property is going towards the water.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's raising the back end.
Gotcha.
He's not touching the front end of the property, so it's still going to have it, and the, and the pit is lower, at five feet below the surface. So it's already draining to the lower point of the property.
Okay.
If the existing sewer infrastructure were in the stream corridor at that end of the site, it would make things a lot easier for Mr. Papa to design. The fact that they have to tie into the existing sewer near Amwell, it's going against the natural grade of the property is what prevents the issues he's facing.
Are you concerned about the size of the basin, given the, how prone we are to flooding conditions?
No, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the size relative to the flooding. The concern I had relative to the size was, as, as Mr. Papa just testified to, it doesn't necessarily conform with the DEP recommendations. With that said, there are examples of smaller drainage areas being diverted to these wet ponds. As far as the flooding concerns, there are emergency spillways built into the design. The design is required to comply with the DEP requirements for reduction of peak rate of runoff, which basically impounds the runoff and requires it to be discharged into the stream in a controlled manner through an outlet structure. So while there is an increase in impervious surface that's associated with the development, and the total runoff will increase, the rate of runoff will decrease in accordance with the DEP requirements. Our office has reviewed the design. There were some technical comments subsequent to the original meeting for this application. I met with Mr. Papa and Mr. Fisher. We went through some of those specific technical comments and the revisions that have been made to the plans have addressed our concerns.
Thanks.
As far as a fence, I mean, would it like a post and rail fence, just that you could see through possibly, but enough to keep people from getting close to that, or, you know, close to the pond, you know, be something that we would consider?
I'd leave that to David.
David, something to that, are you, is it, was most of the detention basins in town? Or they left open like that?
Some of them are, but again, I would defer to Brian on, would be the common practice. As Mr. Papa said, some towns require both fencing, others require it to be open.
We don't have any requirement in town.
Nothing I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of any specific township requirement. I've seen it both ways. As Mr. Papa testified to, every town is different. Every project is different. Some boards and townships prefer to see those, those detention basins or retention basins, as is the case here, fenced for safety. One of the other detriments to providing fencing is it presents maintenance issues. You know, it's a challenge to get in there with maintenance equipment. You have to weed whack around the entire fence instead of running, running a lawnmower through, through the open space area. I'm not aware of any DEP requirements or recommendations relative to fencing. The, the safety, the safety that's built into these designs is that safety ledges are required both below the water surface and at the water surface. Those are included in this design. With regard to this particular application, I would leave it to the discretion of the board, what they think would be best in this case. I mean, you know, I can see the benefit to having a fence also to not having a fence, so.
Okay.
Kind of up to the board based on the way things have been handled in the township.
All right. Will you continue on for now? Well, is there any other things while we're here? Were you talking to some comments that have to be addressed that haven't been yet?
I'm not sure if Mr. Papa completed his direct testimony.
No, I got some more.
You got some more? Okay, we'll wait then.
The basin will discharge to Royce Brook. The discharge point will be in the wetlands, so will require General Permit 11 from the DEP. It'll also be inside the flood hazard area, which will require a individual permit from the DEP. We will have a maintenance drive from the cul-de-sac over to the basin. Township engineer asked us to put a locking gate in his review letter. We agreed to do that. As far as lighting, we have 36 lights. They're LED lights. We maintain the average 0.5-foot candles. Township engineer asked that they be shielded. LED lights are very directional. They point the light at the roadways, not into the houses, and we will provide the township engineer with the cut sheets for the lights, you know, showing their capabilities. Other items that came up in the review letter, we have a phasing plan in the plan set. Line goes approximately up the backyards and through that curve, and the main reason is to allow us to get building permits at, in the first phase without having to do all of the improvements to the roadways for the entire site. An additional benefit is for bonding purposes, so that's the purpose of the phasing plan. For infiltration, we have a rain garden behind the townhomes that meets the infiltration requirement. This site has D-type soil, so there is very little existing infiltration now, so the small rain garden we have meets the DEP's requirement. Township engineer asked if we would provide some additional perforated pipe, maybe to increase impervious. If he recommends that, we'll do that. There are some discrepancies on my plan where I labeled the width of the riverstone that will go around the water surface of the basin. My plans show, I believe it's three feet, but Somerset County requires six feet. So all of my plans will be changed to show six feet of riverstone around the edge of the basin. Another comment was site triangles. I missed showing a site triangle in the townhouse area. I will add those to the plans. Township engineer asked us to provide him with a circulation plan. We gave the fire marshal. We agree to do that. We are going to design the site to be completely ADA compliant, and all of the other, all of the other items tend to be signage, details, small, things like that. We agree to comply. There's one item we would like to make an argument. Mr. Maskey asked us to put a walking, a stone walking trail around the rain garden connected to the top lot. The reason for that is there's 15 homes that have access to the rear yards in the townhomes. So if they were on their patio, wanted to walk to the top lot, there's a walking trail. Township engineer asked us to put some benches, seating out there. I mean, that's not a huge cost. I mean, it's a very minimal cost, but this is the private area for the townhome people. We do not want to encourage, you know, neighborhood gathering right there, infringe on the privacy of the townhomes. So we would like to not put benches and seating there. And that's the end of my testimony.
Okay. David, want to address anything?
I have nothing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Papa. As I alluded to earlier, subsequent to the original hearing, we did meet with Mr. Papa and Mr. Fisher. They addressed the vast majority of the comments in our previous report. I'm not sure how thoroughly the board members have, have read through our substantial updated report, but the majority of it goes on to say that a lot of the previous comments have been addressed. With that said, there were a few items I just kind of wanted to comment on and perhaps ask some questions. With regard to the basements, approximately how many of the proposed lots have basement floor elevations that would be above the existing elevation?
Above existing seasonal high?
No, above existing grade.
Oh, I see.
I'm going to give an estimate of a third, but I didn't do that analysis before I came here.
Okay. I did actually look at it. I was, didn't want to steal your thunder, so to speak, but it is approximately half. So, you know, with regard to the seasonal high-water table, I know there was some questions and discussions about that. About half of the basements are actually going to be installed or proposed to be installed at or above the existing grade. So the, the site would need to be filled in order to bring the grade up to, you know, between the basement floor and first floor elevation, typical of what you would see in a common home. Now, for the properties where you may have some groundwater issues, can you provide some testimony as to strategies in the design that would, that would help prevent that groundwater from impacting the basements?
We wouldn't build a basement there. One of the things that we did, one of the first things we do when we get a property under contract is do a geotechnical study and soils work. So we've already done a fair amount of soils testing on this property for a variety of reasons. One, to make sure that we have adequate soils to build on, and adequate soils that we can design a stormwater system to work and function properly, but also for this purpose, to look to see, especially for single-family homes, whether basements would be suitable. Recognizing that we were going to have to fill good portions of the property to make the sanitary sewer work, we, we believed that we could also provide basements for the vast majority of the homes because of the raise in grade. Seasonal high-water table fluctuates on the property today, although we didn't test every single lot, but it's generally between, you know, a foot deep down to three or four, five feet deep, depending on where you are on the property. So if we're raising the grade slightly and we're excavating two feet and seasonal high's down at five, we're fine. When we go back and actually test each lot, we're going to make sure that there's adequate separation, at least a foot, between the basement floor and seasonal high-water table. The last thing we want as a home builder is to have problems with drainage in a basement. Despite that, we still build homes with basements even above seasonal high-water table with a foundation drain system and adequate drainage so that the, you know, the conditions drain away from the home and it doesn't collect water. So it'll be dependent on the actual soils testing we do prior to the sale of any house, and so as soon as we begin to get the roadways in place and we can go in and test each individual lot in anticipation of sales, we'll know whether we're going to have to build that house slab-on-grade or with a basement.
Are all the drainage leaders off the gutters, are they piped out directly to the drainage system, or are they, so they're going out to the, to the lawns?
Yeah. And as Mr. Papa indicated, for, you know, many of the homes, especially the ones in the middle that back up to each other, and the ones on the left-hand side that back up to the perimeter of the property, we've, we've got drainage behind them with yard inlets so that it's picking up additional surface water, you know, just to make sure that we can handle the surface water and not create, you know, a ponding condition on anyone's property.
Thank you. And there, there was some questions relative to whether the seasonal high-groundwater table elevation changes over the course of the year. It typically does not. There are physical characteristics in the soil, soil modeling, as Mr. Papa testified to, that are going to be evident regardless of when the tests are performed, so it should not matter. With regard to the phasing, I personally don't have any objection to the project being phased the way it's shown on, on the subdivision plan. The one request I would make is that the, the stormwater drainage inlets within the rear yards in that central portion of the site be included in Phase 1. It's kind of right along the phasing line. It's not really clear, and that would just provide an added benefit to those residents to make sure that there's a drainage structure into which runoff can flow.
I agree.
With regard to the perforated pipe, it was really just a, an inquiry. I'm willing to review it with your office. As long as it meets the DEP requirements for groundwater recharge, I don't think it's, you know, I'm not going to press the matter. If it's possible, doesn't create any adverse impacts, I think it's, it's good practice, so it's something that we can review. Okay, with regard to the retaining walls, the applicant has agreed to design, have those designed and certified by a licensed professional engineer. So what would happen is prior to issuing any building permits, they would have to submit, prepare and submit a full design of the retaining walls. They may or may not include collection pipes behind them to equalize hydrostatic pressure. They've agreed to certify those post-construction prior to the issuance of any CL for the houses. Okay, so there's testimony about the need to fill the site in order to get the storm, or to get the sanitary sewer to flow. That makes sense, and it does seem to be the case. However, there is a provision in the redevelopment plan that requires that buildings and site improvements be designed and minimize changes in existing topography and mature vegetation. So quite simply, do you believe that, given the constraints that you're faced with on this site, that the, the changes to the existing topography have been minimized to the maximum extent practical?
Yes. Trucking in fill costs money. I didn't do that voluntarily.
I think the retaining walls in the back are also...
Just...
I think the other, I mean, we wanted to limit the amount of disturbance, you know, obviously to, to meet the environmental limitations on the site relative to the riparian buffer and the stream carter buffer, but we tried to, you know, minimize the disturbance by also adding the retaining walls so that we could kind of truncate the development as quickly as possible at the backs of those lots.
And would you be able to give us an update on the status of the utility authority approvals? Has there been preliminary discussions with them? How far, how far along are you in the process?
I've sent plans to your sewage authority, but haven't heard from them yet. We have revised plans that will get to them, and then I'll set up meetings. I've applied to Somerset County. A lot of the stormwater details around the basin are dictated by the county, so I've sent the county a set of the revised plans. Deanna Canal gave me a comment letter on the first submission, but I've been waiting to get the reaction from your environmental commission, your planning board, and the county before resubmitting to the Delaware River and Canal, and I've submitted for a flood hazard verification from the DEP, and once we know that the lot layout and the basins are the way they're going to be, I will apply for the general permits from the Wetlands Division of the NJDEP. And also, we applied to the Soil Conservation District with the original set of plans, got a review letter. After this meeting, I'll reapply to the Soil Conservation District. Thank you.
We're going to take a brief, five-minute, 10-minute break for our stenographer here because there's been a lot of testimony here, and we'll give, obviously, our professional chance to maybe think of some more things. So we'll reconvene at 10 after. So, we'll reconvene at 10:00 after.
Seating.
We're back in session, we'll get seated, we'll continue on here with our testimony from the engineer and some questions from our engineer.
Just a few more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
With regard to the wet pond, this proposed wet pond will include a liner, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be a clay liner.
Okay. And the comparison, the comparative base in that you testified to, the one in the Four Seasons in Alpen, is that similar design?
Wind as well.
Okay. The last significant question I have and perhaps more comment is, the board heard testimony relative to the subdivision and the subdivision lot. The townhouse lot line is shown on the subdivision plan within the private right-of-way. It's kind of an atypical design and it presents some problems with regard to easements. I mean, basically what you're going to have, if it's approved in that manner, is you're going to have a portion of the townhouse lot that's within the roadway. A more common design would be to have it along the curb line, within the curb line, so that the entire roadway can be its own lot. I understand that there's an issue or a challenge with meeting the minimum lot size requirement required by the redevelopment plan, but I would recommend that it be investigated ways to possibly have the lot line coincide with the curb line. I'm not sure if the board isn't, is exactly sure what I'm talking to. Maybe Mr. Papa can point it out a little bit more closely on the exhibit because it's kind of difficult to see the lot line. But basically what you have is you have a lot line that's running down the center of the roadway.
Okay.
The reason I put the lot line there was because of the zoning. I have to create a two-and-a-half acre lot. And I ran it down the center line of the road so that a certain portion of the road would be allotted to the townhouse section and another portion to the single families. That's the only reason I did it. If we did not have to have a two-and-a-half acre lot, I could put the townhouse lot just around the curb line.
Why do you need a two-and-a-half acre lot? It's two acres minimum. You have maximum two and a half.
Max is two and a half.
Now, the density, you're under density, so you could still squeeze down a little bit.
I'll look into it.
Okay.
I agree with your recommendations. I would think it would be best to have that, if possible, especially if the zoning allows it to have that on the curb line as opposed to the middle of the road.
Yeah, we would agree, but if there is the requirement and we're certainly going to look into it, from a legal perspective, it can be handled by easements. We're talking about lines that would be reflected in your approved subdivision plan and in the approved filed map, and it can be handled by easements. But I agree with what the chair is saying, with Mr. Maskey saying and what your engineer is saying, and we're certainly going to look into it.
Okay.
And certainly, if it complies with the zoning, it's a done deal.
Absolutely, okay. Anything else?
No, I'm available for questions from the board, but that's all the questions I have from Mr. Papa at this time. Oh, one other, the traffic testimony and comments in our report are going to be addressed by the traffic engineers.
That's correct.
Okay, and there was a couple comments relative to the environmental impact statement. Those will be addressed by the environmental consultant.
That's coming up next.
Great, thank you.
All right, so we have any comments or questions from the board on testimony that we've had? Motion to open to public?
So, move to second.
Someone fair? Hi. All right, so we have open to testimony on the engineer. Questions on the testimony from the engineer from the public? If anyone have any questions at this time? Seeing none, motion to close.
Just leave it open, can we?
Just leave it open? We'll leave it open for a while then, until next one. All right, that's, I don't think we have anything else. Thank you, Mr. Papa. Okay, Georgia Marino will say that our last witness would start anything after 9:30, okay? So, we have ample time to get as much testimony until that point. Because I don't think we're going to finish tonight anyway, are we, Counselor?
We don't have our traffic consultant, so the answer is yes, we're not going to finish tonight.
Okay. All right.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and not the better truths to help you? Thank you, state your full name, spell your last name.
Georgia Marino, M-A-R-I-N-O.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Marino, will you give the board members of the public who are here the benefit of your educational and professional background qualifications and experience?
Hi, yes, I'm a senior environmental scientist at Nigerian Associates. I've been there for about 25 years or more. Prior to that, I was with the DEP. I have an undergraduate degree in biology and geology from the University of Rochester and a master's in environmental engineering from Johns Hopkins. I've testified, I've done numerous EISs, lots of DEP permits and testified to other boards.
We'll accept your qualifications.
All right, Georgia, did you and your firm prepare the environmental impact statement, the specific environmental impact statement which was submitted for residential development known as Meadow Brook at Hillsborough? And it was prepared by Nigerian Associates under your supervision, I would imagine, on January 2016?
Correct.
And that's part of the record in this matter, so I want to make it part of the record of this hearing. And then the only change, there was a supplement that you submitted, a new Figure 1 and a new Figure 2 to that environmental impact statement, and that was also submitted. All right, would you briefly summarize your findings and conclusions with respect to the environmental impact statement?
Yes, as Ray went over some of this, but as you know, the site includes open area and woodlands, woodlands primarily around the outside and along the stream corridor. It's in an area that's pretty highly developed with multiple family, multifamily housing, single-family housing on the other side of Amwell Road, a commercial office complex right next door. The ordinance includes some consideration of critical areas. There's the primary area of environmental sensitivity or critical areas is along the stream corridor. The northern boundary of the site is a tributary to Royce Brook. And associated with that, there are wetlands and associated with those are wetland buffers. The DEP has issued a letter of interpretation which was renewed at the end of, or at the beginning of this year for the parcel that includes the stream corridor. And currently, for the other lots, a LOI presence/absence showing no wetlands is being renewed at DEP. That was issued in 2010 and was set to expire with the end of the Permit Extension Act. The only, the township stream corridor buffer is 150 feet from the top of bank and as Ray explained, we did go out, locate the top of bank and put that 150-foot stream corridor on there. There are, the project design has avoided the stream corridor, the associated wetlands and buffers to the extent possible. There is minimal incursion into the stream corridor buffer. It's about 2,500 feet that will be disturbed. That will be replaced by about 9,500 feet of new stream corridor buffer which will allow averaging in accordance with the natural features ordinance.
And again, the environmental commission endorsed that approach.
And the environmental commission approved that, they were happy with that. FEMA has set the flood zone elevations that, along the corridor and using those elevations, we set the flood hazard line. DEP requires a flood hazard area which is based on 125% of that 100-year flood zone. And we've applied to DEP to accept our analysis for that, which is based on FEMA plus one. But DEP also sets a riparian zone. In this case, there's no endangered species mapped on the site. However, within a mile downstream, there's a finding of wood turtle habitat and some of it dates back to the 80s and the area has been highly developed. So, as part of our verification application at DEP, we've asked them to look at that. If they find that habitat is still there, they'll set 150-foot riparian zone, which would be coincident with your stream corridor buffer. So, in that case, the impact into that, that minimal impact into the riparian zone will be mitigated. We're proposing, as will be discussed by the landscape architect, not just buffer averaging, we're also proposing to print, to plant some trees within the stream corridor riparian zone to enhance that wooded area. And that will also serve as mitigation under DEP. The only other area where we're going into the critical area stream corridor is for the stormwater outfall, which is required in order to bring the stormwater to a stable condition as per the soil erosion standards. And that will require DEP permits for both wetland buffer and for the riparian zone, but that's general permit. Other than that, there's no steep slopes on the site. There's no critical high-water areas. And the stormwater system has been designed to the DEP rules and that will be reviewed by DEP as part of our land use regulation permit applications. Overall, the project has minimized the environmental impacts to the extent possible. Any construction will cause some minimal, generally short-term impacts and this is typical of any other. And typical mitigation measures have been employed. This soil erosion plan, the stormwater plan landscaping has been developed. And that's about it.
So, would the location of the endangered species affect any of the buffer averaging if they do find habitat or?
Well, DEP doesn't actually allow you to do riparian zone averaging. They require you to do planting, so...
Where's that located then, the, on the map?
The, it's almost a mile downstream, so it's on the other side of the main road. On the other side of greater, is that real?
So, it's off.
So, it's down, there's wetlands down here.
Where the big pond is. Okay.
But it's not, you can't see down there. But the DEP rule is if it's within a mile upstream, then the riparian zone's 150 feet rather than 50 feet.
But they normally would allow plantings and...
But, right, so they will allow up to 3,000 square feet of impact to the riparian zone as long as you mitigate it. And we're proposing tree planting in the riparian zone slash stream corridor to mitigate that.
Yeah, and you're calculating on 150-foot stream corridor anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, so it's coincidence. Yep, they just define it the same way from the top of the bank.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. The, you indicated that there are two floodlines shown in your plan. One is the FEMA flood line, the other is the DEP, which is essentially FEMA plus one. And I note that the, your DRCC buffer is measured from the more water word or the FEMA line? Have you confirmed with DRCC that that's the correct word?
Yes, DRCC indicated to Mr. Papa that they measured it from the 100-year flood line, not from the DEP flood hazard line.
And if I'm not mistaken, even if they were to measure it from the other one, the 150-foot township stream corridor buffer would still be more restrictive, is that correct? Thank you.
It was designed with the most conservative line, which would be the township stream corridor, correct?
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions from the public on this witness? Seeing none? Okay, next witness.
Yes, Blanche Braillard.
Thank you very much.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and not the better truths to help you? Thank you, state your full name, speak into the microphone, please, and spell your last name.
Braillard. Blanche Braillard, B-R-A-I-L-L-A-R-D.
All right, Blanche, will you give the board and members of the public who are here the benefit of your educational and professional background qualifications and experience?
Yes, I earn my LA degree from Rutgers Cook College. I've held my landscape architecture license since 1985.
Can you lift the microphone a little closer to your mouth or? Is it working? Yeah, it's on, just give it a little close, like near the chin, if you can, please.
And I've testified for a number of boards, most recent testimony in front of West Windsor Township.
Okay, thank you.
I would move for qualifications as a landscape architect.
Thank you very much, we'll accept those qualifications.
All right, Blanche, did you prepare the landscape package that's before the board this evening?
Yes, I did.
All right, you want to describe that and provide some landscaping testimony?
Yes, I have two boards that I'd like to enter into evidence.
Fine. How we label those?
A-11 and A-12?
A-11 and A-12 being entered as testimony, their landscape plans? Do we have copies of these provided in the packet?
They're part of the...
Part of the plans? Okay. I got you in the bag.
Let's tell us which ones which. You want to identify what A-11 is for the record, Blanche?
A-11 is the landscaping plan.
To the left.
Sheet L-2.
A-12 is landscaping details.
What's A-12? Want to identify what A-12 is, please?
A-12 is landscaping details, sheet L-3.
Are those identical to the plans that were submitted with the application package?
They are.
Thank you.
So, with the landscaping plan, we'll start with the street trees. They're sized at four to four-and-a-half inch caliper. The height is 16 to 18 foot tall at planting. They're branched above seven feet. We have a quantity of 93. The street trees are green mountain sugar maple, red oak and green spire little leaf linden. You can see them, you can see them here and all along the street corridors and cul-de-sacs. Typically, at mature height, these species would range between 40 and 60 feet tall or more. The plantings throughout the, throughout the landscape are selected for their deer resistance. In the townhouse units, the townhomes are planted, the townhomes are planted with ornamental flowering trees and a variety of evergreens and shrubs that are also flowering, ground covers and perennials. There is some screening of adjacent parking here with a row of large evergreen juniper. Size of planting would be 30, 36 inches in height. The rain garden that Ray spoke about is located here between the two banks of the green, of the townhouses here and here. These are planted with species that would do well in that wet soils type of condition. The subsurface of the rain garden is composed of a coarse granular material which will be topped with a decorative river stone eight inches thick. The shade trees in the rain garden would be river birch. In the summer, in spring and summer, they're flowering trees such as the sweet bay magnolia and service berry and evergreens such as burk cedars are planted along the edges of the rain garden and between the townhouses and the playground to beautify and provide seasonal interest, also to provide some wildlife habitat. So, many of these tree species are natives. They operate these benefits and we have specified native species throughout the site. Primarily along the eastern edges of the property are where existing trees to be retained are located. So, here and along here.
All right, when you say here and along here, could you be a little more graphic?
It, but, this area abuts some of the residential areas. It would be... It would be here are the townhomes, so it'd be here as a buffer between the townhomes and any of the adjacent developments. And then also here in the area that is just below the turning of the property line, and then also in this corner area of the property line are the major areas of existing trees to be retained, as well as in other areas of the site, but that's the primary area. So if we move over now to the landscape of the...
A-12?
A-12, the playground area. We see that the main entry is coming in from this intersection here. It shows up here on A-11 here. It's a concrete sidewalk, five feet wide. As you approach the playground, there are, there's fencing to either side of the main entrance, but there is no gate. It is open. The fencing is a four-foot-tall metal fence, picket-type style. At the exterior of the playground area, there are two bike racks here that would be able to hold up to 14 bikes. The play area is composed of a playpiece that is accessible, has an accessible route of travel from the entry and around into the transfer platform, which is here at the lower end, and it steps up in a series of decks up to a maximum height of four feet. There's also a slide. There is a, four swings also here. Along the area, as you enter the playground from the street side, there are two benches on either side, plus a trash receptacle. The playground meets ADA standards, including the accessible route. The playground surfacing material is of a manufactured wood chip that is formulated for playgrounds with, and it will be installed with the necessary depth for fall attenuation. Below the surface of the playground, there will be drainage aggregate and perforated pipe with a liner separating these from the wood carpet or wood chip material above. The next area would be the riparian buffer plantings, and they would be in order to satisfy the NJDEP compensation requirement. The plans propose to add 30 trees in the riparian buffer plant, planting. On A-11, it's these three areas with the darkened circles. These tree quantities would likely increase to 40 or more, subject to DEP review, review and approval. These trees will help to provide wildlife habitat. I set forth in the plant schedule for mitigation, trees in the landscape plans, which is located here on sheet 12. The species that are used are red maple, tulip tree, American sycamore, swamp white oak, So with regard to the existing trees that are proposed to be removed and replacement trees, the original project plan submitted to the township showed site clearing with removal of over 1,300 existing trees. At the township's request and to retain more of the existing trees, the applicant has revised the project layout and met with the land, with the environmental commission at its May and June meetings to show the revised project layouts, which with regard to the existing trees on site, result in the removal of 88 fewer existing trees than originally proposed, or a totally, total proposed removal of 200, 1,200, excuse me, 1,274 trees.
All right, Blanche, our next witness, perhaps will be here the next time, or if we're allowed to continue tonight, will be testifying on tree preserv, your tree preservation and tree mitigation ordinance. Blanche is merely giving the board and the public the benefit of what exists on the plans.
Okay.
So, you know, with regard to the replacement trees, the landscape, the township land use and development ordinance requires that the developer plant replacement trees for any existing trees proposed for removal, but it should be noted that the proposed street trees cannot count towards the replacement trees. However, trees in other locations, such as in common areas, plus those trees to be added in the stream corridor, they do count as replacement trees. We have 251 replacement trees in the project. These 251 replacement trees can be counted against the 1,274 trees proposed for removal. So clearly, there remains a substantial tree deficit at this point. But to calculate the final tree deficit, the township has a formula which takes into account the sizes of the trees involved, and I can certainly go into that if need be. But based on those calculations, to sum it all up, the tree deficit is 2,643 trees. The ordinance provides that if it's not feasible for these replacement trees to be planted on the project site, and, you know, clearly, it's not, the, there may be an off-site contribution to the township parks department of a like number of trees for the cash equivalent to be placed in a dedicated fund to be used for purchase and planting of replacement trees by the township on public property.
And that's regulated by the tree preservation ordinance and tree mitigation factors and an economic hardship waiver request, is that?
Yes.
Is that correct?
So, yeah, the economic hardship request is an alternative to that.
And Mr. Decker, Mr. Decker will be testifying with respect to that.
That's correct.
No further questions?
Any questions on the last?
Considering, you know, the size of the lots, where the trees are going to get placed for the single-family homes, are we going to avoid their sewer lines, the roots? Because I'm looking into front elevation here, and it looks like, you know, half is going to be by the driveway, and I'm seeing where the trees are planted, it's the other half, and I'm just imagining, only because I've experienced it firsthand, a tree planted right over my sewer line, and I'm just a little concerned.
We took that into account, and we made sure that we were a good eight feet away from the sewer lines with the placement of all the trees.
Okay. And away from the sidewalks, too.
How far back from, from the curb line is the, I can't tell from the scale here, did you have the tree plantings for the fronts of the houses?
Roughly about 10 feet.
10 feet off the curb?
Oh, from the curb?
Or off the sidewalk? 10 feet off the sidewalk?
From the lot line in the middle of the street.
Yeah, I can't really go scale here on what that is.
So it's about eight, eight feet behind the sidewalk?
Okay. And what, I don't know if this is, maybe answering, what is the, the bond or whatever posted for replacement of any trees that should die, that's being planted? Is there a time that?
We would have to comply with the ordinance. I'm not quite sure what the ordinance says, but certainly, we have to comply with the ordinance.
You have a bond issue or whatever. Any questions from the public for this witness, which there isn't much public left? Okay.
Then I'm moving for a proof, no.
Yeah. There's about 20 minutes to 10. How much more time do you need with the witnesses that you have here?
We have one more witness that we can, we think we can conclude within the next 15 minutes.
Okay, then we'll bring him up. Thank you for your testimony.
Please take your name.
Do you still want to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth to help you? I do.
Use the microphone, please, and just say your name and...
Yes. Thomas Decker, D-E-C-K-E-R. I'm with Bancliff Engineering. I've appeared before this board previously, most recently on the Cisco permador application, I believe in May. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed professional planner. This evening, I'll be providing testimony as a planner. I have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Rutgers University, and I've been a licensed planner since 2000.
We'll accept those qualifications, counselor.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, were you retained by the applicant to prepare some planning testimony this evening?
Yes, I was.
And I think you were asked to address three issues.
Correct.
And the three issues that you were asked to address, the first one is the tree preservation ordinance and the tree mitigation and what the applicant is requesting an economic hardship waiver.
Correct. Ordinance section 188-164E has a provision in it with regards to economic hardship for tree mitigation. Basically, what it says is that the tree mitigation requirement is limited to 1.5% of the total cost of the project, and that total cost includes site improvements, building construction, and so forth.
All right, and to that end, did Kay Hovnanian provide you and the board with calculations as to what these total site improvement costs would be in connection with this application, should it be approved?
Yes, they did. That's included in their letter of June 27, 2016.
Which is part of the record in these proceedings?
Correct.
All right, and just for purposes of the record, would you announce what those total site improvement costs are?
Certainly. The total site improvements, including site and building construction, is $12,597,856.
All right, now, do you want to apply the economic hardship waiver text and testimony in support of the waiver?
Yes. The, the ordinance, as I stated, has a maximum tree mitigation limit of 1.5% of the cost. 1.5% of the 12 and a half million dollars equates to $188,968. Should the amount of trees, which we have a deficit, and I believe the number, if I'm correct, is 2,064, as previously testified to, if we apply the township tree replacement per tree cost, we, I believe we come up to about $500,000 worth of tree replacement. That exceeds the 1.5% limit, so ordinance 188-164E then kicks in and limits that amount of tree mitigation to the 1.5% or the 188%.
And the ordinance is mandatory rather than permissive, is that correct?
Correct. The, the ordinance specifically states that the planning board of board adjustment will grant the waiver. It doesn't say May or anything like that, so it really compels the board to grant that economic hardship waiver.
And by the same token, then, the applicant would be required to pay?
Would it be required to pay the $188,968 towards tree mitigation off-site.
The second area that, that you were asked to address by our client was the height of a sign that we're proposing?
Correct. Section 3.1J5 of the redevelopment plan permits a sign having an area of 40 square feet and a maximum height of six feet. The sign that's proposed, and I believe we're going to enter into an exhibit, and I also have handouts for the board members.
A-13?
Yes, this would be A-13.
I got it.
And it is titled Monument Sign Sketch from Meadowbrook. As you can see on exhibit A-13, a five-foot, five-square-foot sign is being proposed. It has the text on it, Meadowbrook at Hillsborough. As I stated earlier, the redevelopment plan permits a 40-square-foot sign, so this sign area is one-eighth the size that's permitted for the redevelopment, so area-wise, it complies. The question that arises is with regards to the support structure, there is a, a stone pillar that's being used to mount the sign to, the base of the pillar is two and a half feet square, the top of the pillar is two feet square, and the top of the pillar reaches a height of seven foot, six inches. It's that seven foot, six-inch dimension that we're seeking relief from where a maximum of six feet is permitted. Again, the sign itself is mounted at a maximum height of six feet, so it's six feet to the top of the sign. The relief we're seeking is for seven and a half feet to the top of the pillar. It's my opinion that based on the significant reduction in the sign area going from 40 square feet, which would essentially be a five-by-eight-foot sign, to a five-foot, five-square-foot sign, certainly outweighs the minimal height deviation of a foot and a half for a two-foot by two-foot section of the pillar.
Where will it be placed?
The pillar will be placed, or the sign will be placed, yes, as indicated, just as you enter into this development after going through the affordable housing section.
Can't be seen from the road, obviously.
No, it cannot be seen from Amwell Road. It's basically a delineation of once you get through the first development to delineate the second. So it's a small, it's a small sign, basically, to identify where you are.
So in terms of proof, it's, your proof elements are C2 variance?
Correct.
That the net benefits to accrue substantially outweigh any possible detriment, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a planner, that's your testimony?
That's my testimony, based on size, area, and minimal height.
Okay, the only other issue that we have to address with you is the single-family density max, maximum track size as it relates to...
Before we move on, can we just finish with the sign first?
Oh, sure.
How is, how is the sign going to be lit, or is it going to be lit at all?
It is not going to be lit.
There's no lights on it. Okay, thanks.
And is it, is it, is it a real stone facade, or is it a post, the pillar that, is it a real stone material, or is it going to be like a...
It would be stone-faced.
A real stone?
Probably do a block construction, then stone-face the pillar. And the reason why we chose that, because we think it's a more attractive sign monument for a streetscape like this, rather than the traditional development sign that sits on the ground with a big, huge, you know, lettering on it, it wouldn't necess, in our view, it wouldn't be appropriate for this development, which is kind of tucked behind another development, and we think its scale, you know, even though it's, it's got a relatively high pillar, makes more sense and would be more attractive on, along the streetscape.
Okay.
And it would be outside the slight triangle?
Yes, that was, the project engineer has confirmed that it's outside the site triangle.
Thank you.
Continuing, counselor.
Can you tell me what's all blacked out on that exhibit? Looks like something was magic-markered in that upper right-hand corner.
That's just the way Millilah and Bauer's logo reproduces. I don't know why it's like that, but that's...
Okay.
Probably the PDF didn't convert right. The final item, as you mentioned...
Final item is the single-family dwelling maximum tract size as it relates to the redevelopment plan. Now, before, let me ask you a basic question. Are you familiar with the redevelopment plan?
Yes, I have reviewed the redevelopment plan.
All right. And you want to give the board some testimony regarding the single-family dwelling maximum tract size?
Certainly. The Section 31, 3.1D of the redevelopment plan has requirements regarding a, there's a minimum lot, minimum tract size of six acres and a maximum tract area of 6.5 acres for the single-family component of the development. If we look at the single-family lots themselves, we comply. They're six and a half acres. If we include the roads and so forth that serve them, we exceed that by, I believe, approximately two acres. So on one hand, the tract does comply with the maximum area of 6.5, but if we throw in the roads, we're a little over. The number of lots is consistent with previous concepts. As a matter of fact, the redevelopment plan, I believe, permits 45 residential, a single-family residential lots, and we're proposing 44. So there's no increase in lot yields or anything like that. The redevelopment plan had anticipated essentially this portion of the property being fully developed with the townhouse development to the southeast and the balance being single-family. So we've really, I think, remained within the spirit of the redevelopment plan.
All right. So you believe, as a planner, that based on your testimony, that the tract size for the single-family development as posited by you is consistent with the redevelopment plan?
Correct.
All right, I have no further questions.
Would the roads normally be considered in the calculation?
To be honest, I'm not sure. I mean, this is, this is a different situation because you do have a mixed development. So you have roads that are being, you have roads and, I should say, also the detention base, and you have those features that benefit not just the single-family, but they also benefit the townhouse section. So it's not, not just a clean, single-family residential subdivision to come up with those numbers. And we're also looking at a maximum tract area, not a minimum tract area. So I don't know if we have that elsewhere in town where, you know, you're only allowed to build up to a certain, a maximum tract area. And we're very tight on between 6 to 6.5 acres. It doesn't give you a lot of, a lot of wiggle room in there. But again, it's 44 lots. The concepts that were presented at the time when the redevelopment plan was prepared, very similar to what's shown on the plan now, so it did anticipate that portion of the property being occupied by lots.
Just so clear, the 2%, the 2-acre overage that you were talking about, does that calculate using all of the roads or only the roads that are, that are part of the single-family, like that front the single families?
I'm going to look through the project engineer.
You have to calculate, sorry.
Ray provide the calculations.
Those are the roads assigned to the single family only.
All the roads basically to the left on the plan. Center of, center of the roads and left.
From the center of the road to the center of the cul-de-sac, that was assigned to the townhomes. All the other roads were assigned to the singles.
So if I'm not mistaken, the area provided to the single families, is that the 8.4 acres? Is that correct?
Approximately, yes.
And does that include any of the open space?
No.
It's just the actual subdivided lots and the street beds?
And the streets.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, okay. So I guess we wrap it up for this evening, or you...
Yes, we have one more witness to present, and that's our traffic consultant, but he's not here tonight.
Okay. So where is the next time that we could move this?
The next meeting, your next meeting is September 1st.
Is there space available for...
So far.
How much?
There's three other applications being, waiting to be scheduled. The only thing we have on right now on September 1st is Glenn Gary. As you know, they keep coming back asking for extensions. I have reached out to Mr. Marmore to see if on September 1st, they're actually coming in with testimony. If you recall, they were going to come back with their LSRP and their, and a traffic report. It's scheduled as a hearing, but they might just come in for an extension.
Well, we're, we're ready to go on September 1st if there's time available for us.
And we probably only need about a half hour, 45 minutes.
We could, I think we could fit him in September 1st.
Just put on September 1st, and Glenn Gary, if, you know, if they're going to, if they're going to have a Chevy hearing, we'll just, they can wait since they've made everybody else wait.
Okay.
Just to put it honest, you know, and they're probably going to cancel anyway. All right, so we have scheduled for a continuance to September 1st. That'll be without notice, I'm assuming, counselor? Would you need to provide notice? I don't think so, correct?
No, there's no further notice. If you announce, Mr. Chairman, that the meeting is continued, there's no requirement...
Continue to September 1st. You'll have one more witness to provide.
That is correct.
And then any other, will the other witnesses be available? Just any questions that would come up from the engineers, anything after that possibly?
I'm here.
Okay, I would suggest, yeah.
Civil, I think our civil engineer would be here. I think everyone else was questioned by the public and everything else. So we will have our civil engineer here as well. So there's no requirement of any additional notice?
No.
To the public? That's it, okay.
Mr. Linus, I'm not, I don't have the date in front of me of your time of decision. I don't know for sure when it would expire, but would you agree...
Would you like an extension through September 30th?
That would be good.
Okay, you can have an extension through September 30th.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll see you September 1st.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. So that brings us to, last night, there's no correspondence, I believe, to provide, so I would entertain a motion to...
Do we have the business meeting on the 28th?
Did you cancel the, did you like to cancel the business meeting?
I would take a motion to cancel the business meeting if...
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, the business meeting is canceled. So then our next meeting then would be September 1st at regular time. So then at that point, I'd motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned.